We do have a quorum with four of the five board members here. And the agenda, is there any adjustments to tonight's agenda? Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with flexibility?
I'll second.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent, who I believe is gonna recognize some special folks.
All right, good evening. And first we have Ms. Fusick, will you come up please? We received word that she is an educator of the year called The Cherished Gym of Education. Represented by Lambda, Delta, Kappa, Gamma 2025 group. So congratulations, we wanted to learn.
I have a big tall trophy.
Why didn't you bring it?
I could've worn my crown and my rose that I got with it, it was so sweet. And they said that I'm the first principal that's ever been nominated, so.
Great, congratulations, well deserved.
Next up is Ms. Lockwood. Taylor Middle School has received the showcase, Capturing Kids' Hearts Showcase School of the Year again. This is the third year in a row that they have received this distinction. So would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So Capturing Kids' Hearts is a process that we have implemented now for multiple years. We're like on year six. And, you know, revamping and reworking the image of Taylor. You know, inherently, middle schools across the nation have not the best connotation to it. But it was Castellanos' goal to really showcase the great staff that we have and the even better kids that Lovington has. And it means the world to us to be able to put another year of hearts up on our banner in the gym. Because the students that go to our school, we believe that we are building their futures and their successes. And we're working harder than ever to get them up to the high school with the knowledge of who they are and how to be the best versions of themselves. And that was represented in our Capturing Kids' Hearts survey and that the kids take. And then also, there's a traction visit that happens from our Capturing Kids' Hearts mentor specialists. They come on campus to actually take time from wherever they are, they're across the world, or not world, what nation, to come visit specific campuses. And so this year, we had Jim Sweetler, she was our Capturing Kids' Hearts person. And she came and visited and she said, you know what? I don't say this often, but I'm gonna tell you that I've never had a visit like this one. And we had one of our students that has made a huge turnaround in his life and his education. Give her the point. And so he was really excited to be able to do that and had great things to say. But just the ability for her to walk in and feel included. And I think that she probably would've stayed multiple days. Because she just felt like that was a place that is good and true and honest in what we say and what we do. And yeah, so I'm thankful to be able to lead that school. And I brought you all some gifts because without you guys, we wouldn't be able to do the work that we do. So I appreciate you.
We appreciate you, Ms. Lockwood and Mr. Castellanos and your home team.
Well, and you know, the thing that really strikes me with that, Lacey, is that you've got a different group of kids every year. And so for your campus to reach this continual goal with a, thank you, with a different set of kids every year for three years in a row and been working on it. I mean, that's really cool, so thank you very much. You guys work really hard at that, so that's really neat.
All right, last but not least, Mr. Hagler. So Mr. Hagler, I think we had him a couple of months ago and he told us that he was gonna go represent us in Oklahoma. And he has come back as the ACTE Region Four New Teacher of the Year. So would you like to say some words?
Sure. I'm not as cool as Lacey, I didn't bring gifts, sorry. Starting this journey in energy education, which isn't really a thing yet and we're making it a thing, has been a trial. It's been interesting, it's been entertaining, and we've learned a lot. What was really, really cool though is as I went to Region Four, it was an opportunity. I worked really closely with Carlsbad, they're also developing an energy program, we work very closely together. And she, her name's Hannah Van Scott, she's their energy teacher, she was presenting there. So I was like, well, I can go help her present, I can hang out, I can kinda watch and see. I got to meet the Executive Deputy Director of the National ACTE Organization, which was really cool, he's a nice guy. And leading up to it, a lot of my friends were like, you think you're gonna win? And I was like, well, everybody tells me that Texas and Oklahoma skunk us, but I don't do anything to lose, so we're gonna go try. I did the interview off the cuff because apparently they were supposed to email me the interview questions. And then she was like, did you get the questions? And I was like, no ma'am. And she goes, well, let's reschedule. And I was like, I shoot better from the hip, let's go, let's just do it. And so then I got there and kinda flying in, I was like, you know what, no, I want this, I wanna win this. Not for me, but for Lovington and for New Mexico and for energy education. And I think that it was just a really, really big honor to be able to represent those three things and stand on that stage with the best of the best across six states and be the one that wins. So there's five regions in ACTE, so myself and four other national finalists will go to Nashville, Tennessee in December. And with a little bit of luck and hopefully a good interviewer, actually, I think there's two rounds of interviews. Maybe I'll bring a national title home load.
That's fantastic, thanks.
None of that's possible at all, so I appreciate all of it.
Thank you.
I just, I really wanted just to highlight some of the great things that's going on in the district of Arlington.
Can, since we have Hayden and Lacey here, it's my understanding that they're doing something really unique this week up at Taylor. Is that something that they could share about? Now, what I heard was gobbledygook from my sources, but I put it together and thought, okay, I think this is, you're presenting CTE stuff to these students, is that right? Would you guys share that with the board? Because I think it's a great opportunity for our kids.
So what we're doing right now is in conjunction with a high school. And it's the first time that we've ever done anything like this. And what it is, it's called a discovery project. And in January, the LHS counselors came down and they did pre-registration with all of the eighth graders. So in the pre-registration, we've worked hard with our career cluster team, Mr. Stone, Dr. Parker, Mr. Williams, Mr. Hagler, and the rest of them to actually bridge a gap that we haven't bridged before. And that is really having an understanding and knowledge for our students of what they've chosen, why they've chosen it, and where they're going. So what we've done is they went through, the eighth graders went through pre-registration, the LHS counselors came down and they spent time with the students. And they really went through what graduation requirements are and needed and how they are going to then, in January, pick a career cluster to try to concentrate in. So they looked through them and there was videos, the whole team at LHS made videos that was embedded into a Google Classroom that they got on. And so they were able to watch our teachers at the high school talk about what they concentrated in. So there's seven clusters, so all the students picked a cluster. If they missed their pre-registration, because it was a Google form and it had to be turned in at a certain time, if they missed that, Ms. McPherson met with each student that didn't have anything listed and talked to them specifically about the clusters and had them choose one. So it's taken a while, it's taken probably since January of working together to get this all put together. But we were able to do it, and today was our first day and here's what we did. So our teachers, our eighth grade teachers, they also got to choose a career cluster. So they looked at the career clusters and they got to pick a cluster that they felt that they could really benefit and guide students with exploring. So the teachers had a choice, the students had a choice. And today, we kicked off the discovery project and it started with all the students in eighth grade getting onto MyA Learning and getting logged in. They watched a tutorial video about how to use the product. They took a career interest survey. And then they had a set of questions that they researched to develop a presentation for themselves that go deep into what they want, what the experts say they like. And so they're doing a big, today they started, they do a big research project. And it's not with, I told them this morning, I told the eighth graders this morning, you know, when you go into your first job or your first part of your career, you get placed in a position, you don't get to pick who's with you. So LHS did us a favor and they broke out the students for us. So it really was by their interest, but it was also a little bit randomized. And what this did, and I explained to them, is that this was going to be with possibly teachers they've never had. They're going to see students that they may have never actually had a class with. And this is a real-life experience because this is how you enter into job forces and career forces, is being adaptable and having an open mind and a positive mindset about what you're doing. And so they were agreeable, they did it. And where we'll go from there is tomorrow, they have more of the research. They go to first period first, they check in, they get their breakfast. They, we take attendance and then we split them into their clusters. And they'll continue to research, what's really great, this is truly a collaboration, that we're the people that are putting it together towards our students, but it is developed from our friends at the high school. So our goal is that they will have a clear-cut understanding of the classes that they're taking, why they're taking them. And our goal is that when they get to the upper levels, they're gonna be completers, not just kids that do one class. They're, we want completers, we do, it helps them and it gives them a true path. So we've taken a lot of time and a lot of effort and they seem to be responding well. On Thursday, we will really do kind of our, it's a big day. What we're going to do is we're gonna go over and join the high school for a pep assembly. And we started this last year and it was really cool. Where the seniors have their final pep assembly. And as we all together, they move the seniors out, we let them go on to their next phase because they just have, right after that pep assembly, just a very few things to do until graduation day. Once they've had that moment, which is awesome and awesome tradition, we bring in the new freshmen. And then we have the second part of the pep assembly where they're really being allowed to see the amazing future that they're gonna have. So, and I think that's really good, they're very excited. I did have, I do have to say, we practiced a little bit, so they don't have so much shell shock whenever we get there. But after that, we, after the pep assembly, we're actually going to take time on the high school campus and through their cluster leaders. So with their teachers, they're gonna go visit, like they'll go visit Mr. Hagler in the welding shop. They'll stop by the ag classroom, they'll stop by the culinary arts classroom. So it's not like a full-blown tour of every single thing at LHS, but it is designed for them to have some exposure because they will have to walk through the campus to get to those places. And that is something that the eighth graders have asked for, when do we get to go, when do we get to see these things? So we just incorporated it together, which is, I think, a beautiful way to get them to be introduced into their next steps on their educational journey. So in the next couple of days, the LHS teachers will come down to Taylor and they're going to stop by classrooms, they're gonna introduce themselves, they're gonna talk about the programs and what they can expect. And they've also, LHS has also developed many project-based learning activities. And the students will be, they'll start, they'll be starting and finishing them. And we'll finalize on Friday with a, with an assembly for the eighth graders where a representative from each teacher's cluster will present what they've learned.
That sounds great. You did a much better job of explaining than what I heard from, not even throwing names out there, but that's really exciting.
Yeah, and much to their, much to the students' knowledge of what they know going on, it's very little because A, we don't wanna overwhelm them. B, we want them to come to school. So like having, like, we're gonna do this really cool thing is, you know, enticing for them to try it. And so they got the whole rundown today and I think they're excited, it'll be good.
I love the collaboration, you know, that you guys are doing with this. And it does hopefully make that transition smoother, so. Well, thank you, thank you for telling that, that's pretty exciting. That's it? Okay, all right. Well, then we're gonna move right on into information. First up, directors' reports, and I'll open it up to the board for questions. While I'm giving board members just a minute, I also wanna thank Mr. Williams. I actually was thinking about this, about the parking for Sunday. I thought, I wonder how he's gonna do this. And when you sent out that email, I was still having to turn it a little bit to figure out. But I thought, I liked where it said, there will be parking attendance to tell you where to go and, you know, but a lot of thought into that, so thanks for sharing that. I figured we were pink, we were pink, that's, yeah. Yeah, so, okay. Yeah, okay, great. Okay, questions from the board on any of the reports? Did you have anything?
Oh, yes. It was down. Not down. Is that where this policy service? It's not in that part, is it?
No? No? Okay. All right, well then we're gonna move right on into superintendent updates.
Hey, and you'll notice in your superintendent tickets about kindergarten graduation date and time. And LHS New Hope High School graduation date and time. And I do wanna thank Mr. Williams and his team and such and they have done phenomenal job of really truly thinking through the process of what graduation is gonna be at Lovington High School and then the after grads too. So it's pretty exciting and I'm excited to see there. And you'll also see the end of the year celebration is Wednesday. And I will have your assignments, I guess.
You're gonna be there, aren't you?
And to you tomorrow.
I'm gonna be there Wednesday, okay, good. All right, any questions for the superintendent on any of those items? Okay, if not, we're gonna move right on into routine matters. We'll take items one through four as part of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve is presented? Okay. Thank you, next item, budget adjustments.
The first budget adjustment is a decrease in our federal fund for RLIS of $22,814. It's a decrease for the revised FY25 final award. And then there are four budget adjustments that are transfers between functions to ensure that we have a 1% sufficiency in budget for the county tax collection cost.
Okay, so that means only 1% is left in each of those?
It means that we are only allowed to budget 1% for an expense, which is a, which the county takes 1% of our taxes for the housing.
Oh.
Yes, and so at the end of the year, I always have to go in and adjust that because we usually get more than what we're allowed to budget for.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for Tanya? Kayden, I hear a motion to approve adjustments is presented.
I'll send them.
Okay, next item, bids.
And we will state here that we have a service that's going out for RFP and those are the ones.
Okay, and so we're gonna utilize all three of those. The top one, is that one we've used before? Okay, okay, that was an unfamiliar name and I just was not clear what that was, okay. Questions from the board?
And how do they submit that bid, is it per hour? They're gonna bill us this much per hour or?
She's like a retainer?
It is an hourly rate and it depends on who is actually performing the work, whether it's an attorney or an assistant. And so those are listed out. With this being an RFP, the amounts were not considered as the main objective.
Okay.
So.
Okay, no, they've done this in the past and it's, they've been great, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Okay, superintendent's recommendation. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the bids is presented? All right, thank you, next item, donations. We have four donations listed for scholarship, after-grads, skills, and interact club?
That is our SGP club.
Okay. Okay. Okay, or your motion to approve the donations is presented?
I'll send them.
All right, thank you, we're gonna move right on into old business. Second reading to consider approval for Policy Service Advisory's 261, 262.
This is our second reading. This is coming from the Governor's signed House Bill 171, which changed the requirements for a student to graduate. And this is for incoming freshmen. And so it's just going through telling you some of the changes. One of them is to remove the requirement for demonstration competency, student choice two units, and the Algebra II and all that thing. So it's just getting us caught up in locals for more choice of two units. Graduate profiles, which we are ahead of the game, so excited about that. And CTE education work-based learning.
Okay, questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions on page nine, number seven, seven and a half elective units. And it's all of those, those are all this or this or this or this or this, those are all choices, yes?
Yes, it is, yes, so we checked this and that one.
Okay, and then on page 10, it says, the, so they can get Algebra I and Geometry prior? If they do Algebra I in seventh grade and Geometry in eighth grade, is that what we're looking there? A single course credit units earned in Health, Algebra I and Geometry prior to enrolling at high school shall satisfy. So they can actually get Geometry at Taylor Middle School? No? Okay.
Geometry will be at the high.
At the high school? Okay, so.
Does Health have GMI and Algebra II?
And the history, is there a history? No, just the Health, did, there used to be?
He did offer the Mexican history for credit, but it's no longer required to be standard one, but we're gonna continue offering it.
Okay.
So do we need to take Geometry out of there? Does it matter?
Well, this can, the Policy Services.
Yeah.
Out of where?
Page, I'm on page 10. It says.
But prior to enrolling in high school, so that would be eighth grade. Because I believe there's somewhere in statute or policy, the eighth grade, certain courses at the eighth grade level can count towards graduation, but not the seventh grade.
So it can count, we just don't offer it?
It says only Algebra and Health can be offered.
So what we need to do is talk to our friend Dan. That might be a typo, so thank you for, yeah, I'm wondering if that isn't. Because I've never seen where Geometry could be part of that.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we'll talk to Dan and.
So that last, then that last paragraph, the superintendent shall develop a graduate profile that is specific to the community and articulates. Is that what our portrait of a graduate that we already have in place is? So we've already got it in place, okay, good, good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up because I have a feeling that's just a misprint. Yeah, so I'll certainly reach out to Dan on that.
I don't, yeah.
Okay, all right, any other questions on that? Do I not do I hear a motion to approve the Policy Service Advisory's as presented, with the noted exception about the Geometry? Because I think that will be removed from that.
Oh, I saw move. That's not up.
Okay, new business, did yours come up?
Mine didn't come up. Oh, there it is, just now, thank you.
New business, item one, consider approval of memorandum of agreement with the Lee County Sheriff's Department.
We are very excited about the opportunity to put in school resource officers again into our district. And we will be partnering with Lee County Sheriff's Office. They have some SROs.
Oh, good.
And they are trained and they want to be SROs and we're here. And so we are working right now, I'm gonna M U, the details of that. And right now, we're looking. And right now we're looking at three, uh, for next year.
Will they be put in the same place as the others were?
We're looking right now at High School Block, Taylor Middle School, and Jefferson Block. And then they, we'll have them over seeing Lee and that.
Right, okay. Okay.
Couple of typos that I'm, uh, in the very first, it, it's called a memorandum of, memorandum of agreement. And then the very first thing says, "This memorandum of understanding," also known as an MOA, so. Little confusing there, and then it refers to the 24, 25 school year. So I think we need to be sure that that's clarified as well.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Go to twenty-five, twenty-six. Sounds like a, a great opportunity. Our current security situation is complete at the end of the school year this year. Is that correct? The last day of students?
Yeah, will be after grads.
Oh, okay.
Oh, good.
After grads, not the last day that the students are?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, including after grads, but...
We do have to come to school.
I, I, I thought, I thought they did, but, okay. Okay. Alright. Other questions, comments from the board?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a, do I hear a motion to approve this MOA is presented?
I'll send it.
I look forward to seeing this transpire. It's a great opportunity to also, we're, I, you know, there's probably students that may be interested in that pathway. And what a great opportunity.
And they do have a couple of leadership programs.
Great.
That they are planning to make.
Well, and I liked where it talked about the education piece that the officers will also participate in, so, that's great.
So once the board agrees, then I will, um, continue my talk.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next item, consideration of adjustments to the teacher housing policy.
Bringing this policy back to the board, as we made adjustments. Um, in the last couple of years, we have had, we have allowed our tenants to have pets. And, um, as they have moved out, they have caused a lot of damage, more than what the deposit is worth. And our maintenance has gone in and had to repair and clean up. So I am proposing that we say no pets allowed. We will rent home the people that are in there right now that move in forward as they move into those apartments. There will be no pets allowed.
I'm assuming that doesn't mean, um, if they have a, what is it called?
Beta fish?
No. No, I would say that. No before a dog makes a break. A, a security dog or a security...
Service.
Boom. Service animal. I mean, I don't know that we'd have a teacher that would...
But that would not be considered a pet, correct? Because that's a service animal, so, good point.
I just didn't.
Okay.
So no deposit then?
Well, the... One month's rent.
Yeah.
Deposit.
Okay, I saw the 500 was, was out, so just the security deposit. And how much is it?
One month's rent.
Okay. Because I know people that do as much damage as dogs. We had one.
Uh, the teachers use to have animals out there. So they keep them inside all the time and they have truly cost them money.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions from the board? Do I hear a motion to approve the recommended adjustments? Next item, consider approval of the proposed SY2526 calendar. We meet again.
So, um, recommendation is where we put out another draft. And, uh, you have those results in the superintendent's report. And draft four was the winner. And, um, I did make one adjustment. I moved the fall break up a week so that it'd be a little bit more even between Labor Day and Thanksgiving. And then you will notice that before the breaks, that there will be an early case, uh, before like spring break, President's Day, Good Friday. And it's just another, just trying to get another little...
Yeah, that's great.
...fiddle nugget in there for us, so.
Okay. I was impressed with the turnout for the voting. Wow.
We, you know, I am very proud. I have to give kudos to our directors and our principals for getting people out to vote.
Yeah, that's great.
Good.
They were round enough of troops.
That's great. That's great.
Well, exercise your rights, though.
There you go.
Yeah. The, and it doesn't have anything to do with this calendar, but I have been approached by a couple of teachers that, uh, said now that we're going more days, since they've been, he employed, we've had the 10 PTO days and the two early days and the two business days. And was there any way that they could get more, either more PTO or more personal days or more personal business days?
Well, for early days, they have to earn it.
Yeah.
They'll do a duty.
Yeah.
And then, uh, we, that's something we have to look at. But we get 12 days in a year.
Well, I, I did tell them Walmart was hiring.
And we changed the policy to where they can now use those PTO days for anything.
For anything, yes.
And on sick days.
I know. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I did say I would bring it to you. After I told them Walmart was hiring.
Well, thanks for everybody's work on this. We're ready to move forward and families can plan and teachers can make their plans. So do I hear a motion to approve the recommended calendar for next year?
I'll, I'll move.
Okay?
And we will, um, get that information out first thing tomorrow.
Okay.
Our communications director will...
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, communications director. Okay, thank you. Next item, consider approval of the 2526 proposed budget. You're fine. It's a lot.
So in your packet, you do have the budget. Um, but what will be presented tonight is an outline of the proposed budget. It's an outline summary. You also have a one-page, um, symbol.
Thank you.
Um, our focus is on aligning our financial resources with district priorities to support student achievement and long-term success. This budget reflects intentional investments in areas that directly impact student learning and staff support. In academics, we're updating curriculum and enhancing digital resources to improve outcomes. Technology upgrades like device replacements and better connectivity will mo, will modernize our classrooms. We're also continuing to invest in school safety and in keeping our salaries competitive. Our operational fund is supported mainly by the state equalization guarantee. You've heard me say SDG, which makes up over 55 million. Additional funds support specific areas like transportation, food services, and athletics. Our grants, both federal and state, provide critical support for programs like Title I, Medicaid-funded services, and local initiatives. The operational budget is projected to grow by just under 4 million, a 7.4 increase over last year. This increase will support a 4% raise for staff and help cover rising medical and risk insurance premiums. These adjustments are essential to remain competitive and protect the district from growing liability costs. Instructional services represent the largest part of our operational spending, close to 34 million, serving 285 full-time employees in the instructional services. We've increased compensation in that group by 1.8 million and benefits by over 570,000. In support services, we've shifted some costs, like maintenance supplies to local county tax collections and healthcare to Medicaid funding. This helps us free up operational funds for other priorities. Overall, this budget reflects efficient use of resources while maintaining core functions. About 59% of our operational budget is focused on direct instructional services, classroom support, teaching staff, and learning materials. The remaining 41% supports essential wraparound services like counseling, student health, transportation, and facilities maintenance. We're keeping our focus on what students need both inside and outside the classroom. Our people are our greatest asset. 84% of our operational budget goes directly to salaries and benefits. This reflects our ongoing commitment to supporting the dedicated staff who makes student success possible every day. Our proposed average teacher salary for 2526 is just over 82,000, a 4% increase from last year. This exceeds both the adjusted state and national averages, positioning us as a leader in educator compensation. Strong salaries help us recruit and retain top educators and reinforce our investment in teaching quality. This budget is more than numbers. It's a strategy for impact. We're connecting every dollar to student achievement, school safety, and strong partnerships with families and the community. The resources outlined here build the foundation for academic excellence, operational strength, and a vibrant future for every wildcat. So that concludes the presentation and I stand for questions.
That was fantastic. Thank you, Tanya. I know that took a lot of work, you and your team, but that is great. Will we get a copy of that lovely?
I will definitely have Vanessa give you a copy.
Okay, that is fantastic. So I'm gonna open it up for questions from the board.
I, I don't have a question about the budget itself. Go back to the slide that says investing in our people, please. That right there, we need a big poster of that to take to job fairs. We need to start going out and telling people, "This is what we pay. We need certified teachers to come to Levington because you make good money." And then we maybe won't have so many long-term subs if we can get some certified teachers interested in that, making that kind of... You guys, when I retired in 2019, 35 years, 37 years experience and a master's plus 45, I was making 72,000. And that was with my, my increment for Science Olympia. So, I mean, they're making good money. And if we made that one right there into a poster and said, "Come to Levington, you won't regret it." We have a new Main Street. You can drive all the way down now. Um, I just, I really believe that. We, if we got that out to some job fairs, we could start recruiting some people to come.
Very good.
Certified teachers to come.
And I always think about a former board member that he would always say, "You get to have your cake twice." Because with that kind of a salary, it totally impacts your retirement. And, and there's good retirement in New Mexico, so, absolutely.
Well, if we don't have administrators who are able to go, I'll go. You make me a poster and I'll take it.
Now, in the last line that Ms. Hutchins had, if you'll take it to that last line. Um, invest in the future of every wildcat, one resource at a time, building foundation.
For academic excellence, teacher growth, and community success.
And that kind of is our portrait of a wildcat, our strategic plan. But that sentence right there is so powerful. I'm going to be writing that in our cabinet room as well. But that is, that sums it up.
We'll make that poster too. I'll take both of them.
Well, and I do appreciate, I, I mean, you know, I always get nervous as we start inching towards 90% because it, it, we've seen other districts that have gone too far that direction and it's very difficult for them later. And so 84% is a, is a great number and yet we're able to really support our people, so, this was great. Thank you very much.
That was very good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Thank you, Tanya, to you and your team for putting all of this together. Superintendent's recommendation. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the proposed budget? As presented.
Make the motion. You two wake up down there.
Send it.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Okay, quickly, other information, a reminder of the upcoming law conference. Unless you, uh, tell Vanessa directly that you're going, you will not have registration or a room. So, um, and then the leadership retreat in July, I believe it's in Cloudcroft, but we've not received confirmation on that yet. Public comment time. Is anybody here for a public comment?
Drake said it.
Alright, is there anything else?
No, ma'am.
Alright, thanks everyone. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Okay, thank you, guys.